Very good.
Think we're good on our.
Do you believe we're about ready to begin?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, well, we'll call to order the May 28th meeting, the Mall Mill Planning Commission being held virtually. Mr. Grummer, do we have any announcements?
No announcements at this time, no sir.
All right, moving on to approval of the minutes from last month's meeting, you've all been provided a copy of the April minutes in your packet. Does anybody have any corrections or additions to be made to the April minutes?
Yes, sir, I did see one, and that was on item number three, or I guess on new business item number two. I think we've got a typo there unless something happened to elevate Scott Smith, the chairman.
If no.
I'll concede.
I'll pass, thank you.
That's the only thing I saw.
All right, would request that staff make those corrections, any other corrections to be made? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to accept as amended. Second.
A second.
All right, I have a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, we'll try just an overall, all those in favor vote to begin with, see how that works. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Those opposed, no? All right, the minutes are approved. All right, I will now open the public meeting. Oh, first, Mr. Grummer, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
We do not have any public comments that came in on non-agenda items, no sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. Item number one, what are our staff comments and overviews?
All righty. Item number one, can you see my screen commissioners?
I can.
And you're seeing the location map, agenda item number one is concerning a final plat that actually came up last month and was deferred to this month, and there was me there, okay. Located in the north, in the northeast corner of the city in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. The, the location is a final plat to be platted for commercial use, and last month it was designed into a three lot final plat, this, this go around, it's actually been modified to a two lot, and the staff comments are the source of title needs to be completed, but that's still pending the closing of the property, so that'll hold the plat up until the property's closed and the owner changes title. Access easement must comply with county requirements, which out of the county comments, they have part of their requirements is the provide county with the volunteer fire department sign offs on the proposed development, meeting county requirements for assurances of completion of improvements, and then add plat notes dealing with the water and sewer on the property. They do have it located on the actual plat, but they did not place the notes as to the provider of that, and other than that, staff recommendations is staff recommends approval contingent upon satisfaction of all city staff and city engineer, city attorney, fire chief, county, and any further commissioner comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. Commissioners, any questions, comments on this?
Mr. Chair, it's Craig. You recognize, am I recognized?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, then, is there, I have a question here, and I'm sorry that I bring this up in committee, is that on, little bit odd for this plat, is that we have an ingress egress easement of forty feet that's within a twenty foot building setback. Is there any consideration for that building setback to match the ingress egress proposed utility easement for the plat?
That's a good.
I don't think there's a requirement, I don't think there's a requirement to do so, but it might be a good idea.
No, that's, I mean, that's a good point, they couldn't, they wouldn't be able to build in the, in the ingress egress area regardless, so moving that to a twenty foot setback shouldn't be a problem. Mr. Chambers is.
We'd be going from a twenty foot to the, to the forty foot, it would match, basically the building setback on the west side, lot one would be the same as the ingress egress and utility easement.
Mr. Chambers is on the line here, the applicant, would you like to, you're muted right now?
Yeah, let's go ahead and bring Mr. Chambers in.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, we would, we would not have any issue if we had to make the building, the building setback match the forty foot on lot one, that would not be a problem.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that as a, as a comment to be incorporated.
Noted, Commissioner Johnson, any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion, I can get back to the agenda.
I'll reread the agenda item, this is the final plat of lots one, two, and three, the whole state commercial addition in the Mall Mill Extraterritorial Jurisdiction for Quick Trip Corporation.
Yes, sir. Correction, correction, Mr. Chair, it's actually lots one and two.
Yeah, just lot one and two.
Make a, I'll make a motion, Paul, did you have a question?
No, I was just making a comment, it was only lot one and two.
There you go. Make a motion, this stays with us, does it not, Mr. Grummer?
Correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Sometimes I just don't remember, but make a motion that we approve the final plat for lots one, two, the whole state commercial edition of Mall Mel and the extraterritorial jurisdiction for Quick, Quick Trip Corporation, as the applicant, pending any other further commissioner or staff comments.
Second.
Said including county?
Yes, sir, I would make amendment to go ahead and include county, thank you, thank you, Ms. Fisher.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
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 Those opposed, no? All right, motion carries. Moving on to item number two, the ordinance amending city code chapter ninety-four zoning permitting the mayor or mayors designate those amendments to chapter ninety-four. Mr. Grummer, staff comments?
All righty, so this was a resolution that was passed by city council requesting the planning commission to make a recommendation for an ordinance to amend section ninety-four dash nine of the Mall Mel city code. City Attorney Melissa Krebs is on here, and I believe it'd probably be better for her to give the description of what's being asked here.
Madam City Attorney, you're right.
Sure, as we discussed at the subcommittee meeting, the current provision requires that only a landowner, lessie, or the planning commission, or the council initiate any amendment to chapter ninety-four, or the land use plan, and so this would just allow staff, the mayor or his designee, to initiate an amendment when needed. Otherwise, we have to go to the council, and then to the planning commission, and then back to the council. It just kind of eliminates one of the, one of the steps.
All right, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Either Mr. Grummer or Madam City Attorney, is, are there any staff recommendations as to this?
So, from staff standpoint, I believe these were some practices that were actually kind of done in the past, and we're trying to clean this up. For the most part, staff looks into these things, of course, we bring items to the subcommittee to discuss, and sometimes we need to hash them out more than just one meeting, but whenever we do work on certain things, and we can find amendments that need to be cleaned up, which there's going to be some of that coming up, the ability for myself or certain designated persons within staff to bring that to the commission could expedite the process, but it doesn't eliminate the, the proper notification, public notification, and the process that it goes through, so staff recommends the approval of the recommendation to city council to, for the ordinance change.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. Do I have any questions or comments from the commission?
Of procedural, so this would be a due press, due process, or an agreement to submit this to the city council so they can vote on it, and that, would that be the resolution twenty twenty-eight, or would it be ordinance one hundred?
And so actually, you would be, if I'm, City Attorney, correct me there, you're making a do-pass recommendation for the ordinance, the resolution was actually passed by city council to asking this, the planning commission to recommend the ordinance change, so you're doing a do-pass recommendation of an ordinance amending section ninety-four dash nine.
Correct, yes, they had to, we had to have the resolution to get the ordinance to you.
Okay, with that, make a, a do-pass recommendation to the city council for the amendment of ninety-four dash nine concerning ordinance one hundred. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Those opposed, no? All right, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number three, the replat of lot one thirteen A, Osage Hills Edition, phase five through eight for Mr. Umesh Patel. Mr. Grummer, staff comments?
All righty, can everybody see my screen?
Uh, no.
You're not?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, well, let's try that again.
Okay.
Let's see. How about now?
I'm on.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, I'm seeing, okay, here we go.
There we are.
So you're seeing the agenda item number three?
Yes, sir.
I am.
Okay, good, thank you. I needed confirmation because the last meeting, sometimes I thought out, you were looking at it, and you actually weren't. Agenda item number three is Osage Hills Edition replat, lot one thirteen, I have it A on the agenda, but we did request that they change that to lot one thirteen R to designate as a replat. This property is located on the western side of Mall Mel and residential area off of Manitou Drive in Osage Terrace. The, this is a lot merger of two residential lots into one, these have certainly been passed in the past, and the utility clearance letters were sent out, there were no objections from the utility, and we, with the exception AT&amp;T approves the request, however, an existing fiber handhole and terminal are in the utility easement along the curb of the cul-de-sac on the same property line. Let me pull that up for you real quick. So there's a, so they, any adjustments requested will be one hundred percent reimbursable to AT&amp;T, but they did not say there's any conflicts in the actual easement that runs in between the two lots, requesting abandonment as part of the merger. Staff comments have been addressed by previously that were on the packet that went out, and otherwise, staff recommends approval contingent upon meeting all staff, planning commission, and subcommittee meeting comments. There was, and I'm sorry, from the subcommittee meeting, there was a request to verify conflicts with the existing drive, which was shown on the plat on the, on the eastern border over here, they did say that there was some concrete curbs, which they showed pictures of, which was in the planning packet, but those curbs are on the surface, they're not actual structures, and do not impact the actual lines, and that's something that can be addressed by the property owner, so I had those removed from the plat, since it doesn't really pertain to the filing of the plat.
But then I can assume that the survey we saw at the work session, and this one, they, they made the correction on that drive?
So it wasn't a drive that showed on it, it was actually some concrete bumpers?
It was actually a driveway next to it too, that looked like it was a little strange.
Yeah, the way it was shown on the plat, it did, it didn't match the actual curvature, so there was some items there. So are you, are you requesting that anything that may be over the property line as far as concrete from the previous, the, my concern is that that's something that this property owner didn't do, that the, the adjacent owner did, and if there's any conflicts, because it's concrete, those are things that can be cut up and hashed out on the civil side. What I'm used to, when it comes to lot lines and plats, if there's structures that are over, and when I say structure, like a building structure that is attached to the, to, and goes over the line, then those need to be resolved because they do create conflicts of ownership.
But I was just, I was just presuming that they went back out and looked at it, and they have corrected what we saw at the subcommittee meeting.
So, let's see, so we have Josh Newton with, who's the contractor representing the owner. Josh, can you, can we hear you?
I'm here.
Okay, can you address Commissioner Fisher's question concerning that?
Certainly, Commissioner, as, as we understand it, according to our civil engineer who did the layout for the site, essentially what we're dealing with is, as Mr. Grummer says, a series of, they're basically parking bumpers that were put along the property line of the adjacent property, those are falling on to Mr. Patel's property. In addition, the driveway also crosses over onto his property partially, not all of it, but just a very small corner of it. So I think the concern that had been brought up previously was that the, the survey was inaccurate, but it is actually proven that it is accurate, but as Mr. Grummer mentioned, it's, it's nothing that is an actual structure, other than a couple of parking bumpers that could be removed if necessary, or a driveway impeding on Mr. Patel's property, but really, this seems, from our perspective, like a non-issue.
I presume then it's just a ownership coming to an agreement between the two property owners then.
I would agree, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the replat of lot one thirteen, one thirteen R in Osage Hills Edition, phase five through eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
I'm just curious, is the adjacent owner aware of this conflict that constructed the driveway, Mr.? Is it Newton, I'm sorry?
Yes, to my knowledge, I, I am honestly unsure.
So you don't know?
Nothing that we, the, yeah, we, the contractor have not approached him about this.
You don't know if he objects, you don't know if he objects to the survey or not. So his property line survey may be in it for all we know.
I would say that's conceivable. We did have our, our civil engineer double check it after the previous subcommittee meeting, and it was proven that, that it was crossing over onto Mr. Patel's property.
Yeah, the one thing I would say, I, when I went out this weekend to look at it, I didn't see any surveyor stakes between those two properties, so it was very difficult to try to determine if that driveway was or wasn't on it.
There should be a pin in the ground at the curb area.
Well, I'm not getting out and looking at pins in the ground.
Sure.
Because on the other side, there was a stake with a flag on it.
Yes.
So I kind of agree with Craig, somebody needs to tell that the property owner, so they can get it worked out.
We can bring that to attention.
I don't know that it's our position here, I mean, we can replat it, and they can deal with this in a civil issue, if there ends up being discrepancy of some sort. The line that, the line that's, that has the driveway on it, I'd ask your civil, who's representing, I guess, the owner at that point in time, about actually verifying that if it was on the line, it's not shown on the plat anymore, based upon whatever direction you received, either included or excluded, but the, the line, I would say your eastern boundary line on, on one thirteen R, or the line measuring, what is that, two seventy-two and some change, that line is not replatted, so that line is, is as platted when the subdivision was, was initially platted, the only thing we're taking out is that shared easement, so it's over, it's over, they're going to have to work that out. I don't have any issue with the plat, I'm just curious.
Sure. Any further discussion? With whatever recommendation that you, you all have, our goal is just to, to get the replat approved in order to be able to proceed with site work.
Anything further from the commission?
And we've got a vote with a second, right, I mean, we've got a motion with a second, correct?
Correct, we do have a motion on the table, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say yes? Yes.
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 Those opposed, no? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number four, the replat of lot one twenty-five R, the Osage Hills Edition Phase seven for Jason and Julie Anne Hinjay. Mr. Grummer, staff comments, recommendation?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Chair, can you see my screen?
I can.
Yes.
Okay, showing agenda item number four, this is Osage Hills Edition replat, actually just around the corner from the replat that you just approved, this is lot, to be lot one twenty-five R, and this as well is a two lot property that they're asking to merge into one. The utility clearance letters were received, there were no objections from any of the utilities, AT&amp;T approved the request to replats lot one twenty-five and one twenty-six. However, any request of facility adjustments to the pedestal along War Eagle Drive on that same lot line, or the fibers in the utility easement along War Eagle Drive and Sagamore Court will be one hundred percent reimbursable to AT&amp;T. So they did mention there's no conflicts in the actual easement requesting abandonment, but if there's any adjustments that need to be made in the, the one running along the roads, then they will have to be reimbursable. On top of that, the client has provided all edits as requested, and staff recommends approval contingent upon meeting all staff, planning commission, and engineering comments. One of the comments that came out of the subcommittee meeting was an improvement to the vicinity map, and that item has been corrected, as you can see on the plat in front of you. So again, this stays in planning commission, it does not go to city council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer, any commissioner questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the replat of lot one twenty-five R of Osage Hills Edition Phase seven, Jason and Julie Hinjay, is applicant, getting any other comments?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say yes? Yes.
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 Those opposed, no? All right, motion carries. I will now temporarily adjourn the planning commission and convene the board of zoning adjustment for item number five, the request for waiver regarding section ninety-four dash twelve for the resubmission of an application for Vicki Singh. Mr. Grummer, staff comments?
Sir. All righty, can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Okay, not yet.
Now we can.
Okay, so this is an application Holloway Engineering is representing the client, if you recall, you actually saw this in planning commission back in February for a zoning change from a PRD to a C three and a land use change from a special use residential to a commercial. The, since it has been less than twelve months, it does require a request for waiver of that twelve month period in order to come back to the planning commission for the zoning change, they're not asking for a, a land use change, they're just asking for a zoning change, and it's, they're requesting a downgrade from the C three that was approved to a C two, C two is a lesser lesser grade for commercial, and the reason for that, whenever they came through, and I believe the applicant, applicant's representative should be on here, but when they came through, they weren't certain of the, the uses, and based on the uses that were across the street in North Little Rock, which had industrial use as well as commercial use, the C three was justified, so a C two, of course, would be a less impact commercial use than what you're going to see in the area, but they determined that the applicant has requested a gas station, and they realized with the C three, it does not allow for a gas station use, and a gas station is actually being put in across the Diamond Park Road, so, and that's sometimes you'll find a common multiple gas stations, but that's the request for the change. I've just been notified that the applicant's representative is not available yet, he's apparently attending another planning commission meeting in Marlton, so if there's any questions, we'll have to see if there's anybody else on there. Let's see. And here we go. So he's trying, he's apparently has a, has the wrong, the wrong information, so he's trying to get connected in. So he's trying, he's apparently has the wrong, the wrong information, so he's trying to get connected in.
And Mr., to make sure we're not getting the cart before the horse, I believe the first item is to determine whether, whether or not we're even going to hear this resubmission, is that correct?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Todd?
Uh, ninety-four dash twelve. It says, you know, we can grant this waiver within twelve months. This limitation for good cause. And I guess that's lawyer speak to me, what's a good cause?
I'll pass that one on to our city attorney.
It's a good question, and it's, good cause is not defined in the, in this code section, I did just check the definition section. So that is somewhat subjective with the commission. As far as good cause, the important thing is that we are consistent in granting these types of waivers. So if what your determination of good cause is, should be something that we make a record on, because we need to be consistent in the event that someone else comes and asks for a resubmission within twelve months under circumstances that might be similar or maybe very different.
Okay.
Do we have an applicant's representative on the line yet?
Before you get any further than that, John and I have been on this longest, and John, I can't remember this ever coming up.
We, we had a waiver a few months ago on a different item, and that, this is the second time I've heard request for waiver.
Yeah, but was it a waiver for the same type of thing?
No, no, this was for something else, it was a procedural waiver. It wasn't for a resubmission. I do not recall what it was, but again, with almost twenty years, this is the second time I've had a request for waiver that I can recall.
And commissioners?
We've had a few applicants defer their items to avoid the twelve month restriction in the past twelve months.
But that had to do with the potential of the being?
Being denied, yes, correct. Voted in the negative.
Mr. Grummer, do you, is your opinion that is C two more or less restrictive than C three?
Well, it's a little bit more restrictive in a C three, you're able to do car lots, open air retail. In a C two, you could not do that, it would have to be more of the retail style that you have for, it does allow for certain restaurant uses, and, but it's considered a town center commercial versus a heavier use, so it's, it's a downgrade from what they had, so from a zoning category, and whenever they came through, I've been notified, they're about to connect in here momentarily. I had recommended an actual C two, because it did actually provide a little bit more flexibility within the type of uses that they're looking for, but they did ask for the C three, and it was justifiable because of the uses surrounding it. But when you look at?
You're using this term downgrade, but really, is it an upgrade, the way I look at it, because it is a more restricted use. We're going from, we're going into a more restricted use area, so from surrounding property use, it's more restrictive to me, so that, and that means that you'd have less, I would say that's the way I look at it, is it would be less objective. A C two would typically build things that would be less objective than a C three could potentially. Trying to stretch this good definition, I think I'm, but you know, it's, I don't, I'm for it because they, I think C two is a better deal. We tried to tell them that when they came through the first time, but, or, but anyway, they didn't, you know, they can do what they want to, it's the right. I mean, land use is already commercial, so we're stuck in this commercial area, you know, one way, we can go to C one, don't want to go C four. So they could be asking something much more or less restrictive with a more restrictive.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Todd, yes?
Oh, and I agree with Commissioner Johnson, and in my perspective, a downzoning from C three to C two could be justified as a good cause because of the additional restrictions that is involved.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Any other questions or comments, or while, while we have indicated that the applicant's representative is going to be dialing in, we are not obligated to wait for them, so any other commissioner questions or comments, or?
I'd like to consider the waiver, let's deal with the waiver and get on to the rezone. I like make a request that we, that we request the waiver be approved for section ninety-four twelve resubmission application, Vicki Singh being the applicant, any other comments?
Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
This stays with the planning commission, correct?
Yes, it's a waiver agreement, too.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the determination if we're even going to hear this, so it should stay with us, although it may be appealable if we deny it to the council. All right, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, waiver is granted, and I will adjourn, temporarily adjourn the board of zoning adjustment and reconvene the planning commission, and we will hear their request for the amendment. Mr. Grummer, any further comment?
So again, the amendment is a request to rezone from a C three commercial service to a C two town center to allow a proposed automotive filling station. We received one call on that, and they had no comment. We're not, they're not requesting a land use map amendment, which was actually amended during the last meeting. That was amended to, from special use residential to commercial. So this is just a request to rezone to a C two town center.
All right, and is there a staff recommendation?
So staff recommended, staff recommends a due pass recommendation to city council for the rezone to a C two town center.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer, any commissioner questions or comments of staff, is it, does not appear we have the applicant on line yet?
So I, the, we've texted the phone, phone number to him, and he may be trying to dial in, if you want to give just a few more seconds, I can check on that, in case he's. Yeah, he's, he's getting, he's getting there apparently.
Commissioner Fisher, something?
Yeah, all we're doing is going from C three to C two. And what it goes on to say here is for a proposed auto filling station and convenience store. We're not approving anything along that line at this juncture, you know, I would presume, because isn't that a conditional use?
That's permitted by right under C two, not?
A gas station is, a gas station is permitted by right under C two.
Yes.
Either way, I do agree with Commissioner Fisher that the purpose of this rezoning is really kind of unnecessary, so I think it might be worth putting in the motion to just indicate that we're changing the zoning or not changing the zoning.
It could, we would, yeah, Mike, are you saying is that it could, if we rezone this, any permitted by right use could go in C two?
Yeah, yeah. And I was, for some reason, I thought that, that the filling stations or convenience stores was a conditional use in that zone, but I, you know,
PRD.
Book is thick, so.
Yeah, it was one, yeah, John Dry, it was one as PRD, but not when we've rezoned C two, it will not be.
Mr. Chairman? And I'm not motion to, for a due pass recommendation to the city council to downzone this particular area from C three to C two.
Yes, second, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a couple seconds, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
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 Those opposed, no? All right, motion carries. All right, I will now again adjourn the planning commission and reconvene the board of zoning adjustment for item number seven, the variance regarding section ninety-four dash one six six and area requirements for two Onyx Lane for Mr. Casey Burks regarding his shed, Mr. Grummer.
Okay, just let me know when you can see my screen.
I can.
We can see it.
Okay, so this property is located in the north part of Maumell off of Odom Boulevard North in the Diamond Point Drive area. The property is actually fronts Onyx Lane. So the house faces westerly, and the applicant actually applied for a building permit for a storage building, construction, after it was already being constructed unknown to the applicant that he had to have a building permit for such. He's a new resident and wasn't familiar with the, the actual requirements for that. We've reached out for utility clearance letters concerning the actual easement, the property actually, or the building, I'm sorry. When you look at it, it's located in the northeast corner of the lot, again, the lot faces Onyx Lane, the building in the northeast corner, and they positioned it approximately four feet from the fence on each side, which you can see on here. The utility, utility easement on the north is a ten foot utility easement with an eight foot, and then there's an eight foot setback on the side, and then an eight foot setback, I believe, on the rear. So when you look at the building, again, this is from Onyx Lane, because the house faces Onyx Lane, the building is in the side yard, and which the applicant provided pictures of it for your review, and then the biggest conflict that was found was concerning with the utility. There is North Little Rock wastewater, does have a line that is in that easement, and it does appear that the building may be over the line. So North Little Rock wastewater did provide a letter, as you had in your packet stating that they do approve for the continued construction of the building, since the owner has accepted liability if, in the event that North Little Rock wastewater must make a repair or rehabilitation to the sanitary sewer. And that is staff comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I just make one correction on what Scott just said, and it's a ten foot rear yard setback.
You're correct, it is a, it's a ten foot rear yard setback, it's an eight foot side yard setback, and the shed is four feet from the fence on each side, and I apologize, I was looking at the wrong thing.
That's okay. It's a big book.
Mr. Chair. I got a question.
Go ahead.
Mr., Scott, on the other utilities, did we receive letters from all of them?
We have, according to, we've received letters from, no objections from Central Arkansas Water and North Little Rock wastewater. I'm still showing no response from AT&amp;T, Centerpoint, and Entergy. Public Works did not, we received Public Works comment. So the city of Maumell does not have any storm drains in the easement at this time, so Public Works is okay with the structure being left where it is, as long as the homeowners understand that they are responsible for any removal or moving of the structure. So any, any approval would have to be contingent upon clearance from AT&amp;T, Centerpoint, and Entergy, and the rest of the utility.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Part of that question. How does this transmit to the next owner of the property?
So that's a good question, since, since typically it's the property owner's responsibility whenever they sell a property to, in the property owner disclosure, in that transaction, to disclose anything that would be over the easement, so he would have to disclose it, if he doesn't disclose it, if there's nothing in public record that would identify that, then it's very possible that it may not be, may not be caught. So one of the things that, you know, we could do here is keep it within our files based on any transactions, but I spoke with the city attorney concerning that, and we couldn't really identify anything that could be done on public record.
Okay. Thank you.
Variance, the variance goes with the property, correct?
The variance does go with the property, but typically those variances in city attorney, I'm sorry, is that, would that be filed on public record as far as variance?
Variance does go with the property, it would be in our records, I don't believe it gets filed at the county courthouse. They might have the ability to do that, I don't think they're typically filed.
Typically, a variance would show up anytime that a building permit was pulled, and we would have a record of that concerning any issues or conflicts.
If I remember correctly, at the subdivision or subcommittee, subcommittee meeting, John had asked the applicant to do a one call, and I'm curious if that was performed, and if any pictures were taken, they weren't included in the packet.
Mr. Chair, we do have the owner of the property on the line and available to speak as needed.
Mr. Burks, did you catch that comment by Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir, I did, I actually, the very next day after the first meeting, called in the ticket, I do have the ticket number here. They were supposed to be here by close of business, by their close of business yesterday, and as of this, this afternoon, when I got home from work, there were still no flags. The lady, I called them this morning at ten thirty AM, told them that I had a meeting tonight, and they did pictures of the flags, and she said that they were incredibly backed up, but I, I do have the ticket number to verify when I called it in, which was the day right after the subcommittee, so.
John, you were, John, based on your experience with Maumell here, you thought there was a pretty good multi-payer running through that easement?
Uh, yeah. And again, I'm not worried about Mr. Burke, he's a good guy, he's going to do what he says. It's the next property owner that comes in and buys the house that, you know, if this was, you know, a plat, we could put a plat note on it, but this is a lot, so I don't know how you convey the agreement to not be liable to the next owner.
That was true, right, John, you made that comment at the subcommittee meeting that you, you thought South Austin Bell had a, or ATT had a line through there?
Oh, yeah, I believe that runs down along between those houses, and actually, it goes all the way back to Apple Blossom, where the cross connect box is, or the?
You had, you've had this ticket open for two weeks, and I think, what's, what's one call's obligation to public for mark? Was, they have a mark with them, what, forty-eight hours?
It's usually forty-eight hours.
Of course, you're not a contractor. They have, yeah, they have to mark it for forty-eight hours, and it's good for fourteen days.
I even tried to get, guys, I even tried to get the original, I'm sorry, the last ticket, a ticket was just pulled by one call on April the twelfth, when, before- uh by one call on April the twelfth, when, before I purchased the property, I'd just been living there for a little over a month. And I, before I purchased the property, we had a fence put up there and one call came out, I actually saw all the flags out, that's what, you know, really sucks about this, is I, if I could go back, I would have took pictures of them. But I even tried to see if they had any kind of a I don't know, if they, of course, obviously they wouldn't have pictures, but they had nothing on file, just the fact that they had came out on the last ticket uh and, and flagged everything, the flags ran um from the side yard under my deck in the back directly under the shed. They're actually, he- here's the only point that I would like to submit to this uh, because I actually did see the flags, for what it's worth, and I know it's just my word, but where the flags were uh were not anywhere in the part that would be open, they were actually directly under where my shed is built, even if I was within the uh guidelines of where I could build the shed, they would still be under my shed.
That's a utility problem, then they're outside the designated easement, it's not your issue per se, so if you were you could ask them to plot and move them over. Yeah. Which they won't do.
Yeah, going back to uh Commissioner Todd's comment about what the next owner may or may not do and being able to designate uh, you know, M- Mr. Burke's agreement, I mean, that, that's a bit you know, ma- you know, maybe redundant or, or overkill for this because you know, while, while Mr. Burke's is, you know, playing ball nicely, it really wouldn't matter if the next owner doesn't want to, if they've got something on the easement, then they're not gonna have much choice about it. I mean, the easements are gonna run independent of this variance.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, um, while we have kind of a pause in the conversation, go over the code section that's uh relevant to variances in uh these types of uh code issues, and it's in ninety-four dash sixty-six, paragraph two. Uh, the board, board of zoning adjustment shall have the following function, to hear requests for variances from the literal provisions of this chapter and instances where strict enforcement of this chapter would cause undue hardship due to circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration or where unique mitigating circumstances exist in the immediate areas such as public or private open space or similar buffers. Such variances shall only be granted when it is demonstrated that such action will be in keeping with the spirit and intent of the provisions of this chapter.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney, uh, Mr. Burks, any uh response to that comment or that, that section of code?
Um, I can give you some real hillbilly uh feedback, not very, not very uh law profound. But I will say with the last comment there, uh, I'm not sure what the in keeping of the spirit and intent is gratifying, but I will say this. If the spirit and intent of the subdivision by, subdivision by which I purchased my property was in a court of law, to me, my wife and I have had this discussion, um, I screwed up, I built a shed where I shouldn't have, evidently, and it's uh, I feel like I'm trying to get President Trump on the phone over this and I, 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 I take responsibility for that, but I think the one thing that I would say with spirit and intent, I bought a home in a subdivision where literally if you look at the picture that Mr. Grummer posted, directly across the fence line of me, my neighbor has the exact same size shed that is also not within the parameters of it, so I think if any of us, that maybe, I was unfamiliar with Maumell and I bought the property based on what I was looking at, that I could build the same thing and then when I started building it, I realized that I couldn't uh, because this has passed since then and I understand that. Uh, so I, I mean, you know, I appreciate what the attorney said, I mean, I, I don't know if that is in any way what's you know, is within the spirit and intent of uh what is happening in said chapter, I don't know what the chapter is, what that's referencing, but uh, I, I was just simply trying to do what I felt like was and is a pattern in the Diamond Point uh subdivision and um, you know, I would just ask that everybody consider that, obviously, I wasn't trying to do anything out of a malice or, or, you know, to create hardship on, on, on anyone, uh but um, my wife is a real estate agent and since then, she even said, yeah, Casey, you really should have done this the other way and she but uh, she said, now we gotta put it on the seller disclosure and, and um, you know, and of course, I'm going, where were you when I was pouring concrete, anyway, whole nother chapter. Um, but anyway, yeah, that, that would be my, my, my uh feedback and Melissa, I, I don't know if that's what spirit and intent means, but that I mean, that's just probably the most honest uh stance I can give. Appreciate y'all considering it though.
Alright, any uh commissioner questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have a comment, uh and this is probably one of the uh items that comes up probably more often than anything else, it's probably got more uh storied sheds where they're not supposed to be. However, when it comes before us, we in the past uh have ruled that some people have had to tear things down. So I think we have to be consistent as we're going forward and, and, you know, I'm sorry, but uh, since this has been brought to the attention, I think the uh side yard and rear yard setback needs to be uh applied here.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion and mind you, a motion should be in the affirmative.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion now and uh to we, we approve affirmative variance regarding section ninety-four one six six yard and area requirements for number two Onyx Lane regarding this accessory building with Casey Burke's staff.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
Alright, a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no?
No.
No. No.
No. Alright, to verify the votes, I have Commissioner Smith voting affirmative, all other commissioners voting negative, is that correct?
Yeah, sounds correct.
Alright, uh, motion fails and the variance is denied, um.
Mr. Chairman.
One second, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Burks, uh, please uh review the code, you, I believe you have a right to appeal this to the city council if you so choose.
Okay.
Alright, uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, uh, I didn't have any query, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, alright, I will uh reconvene the planning commission, I see we have some discussion items on the agenda, Mr. Grummer?
Um. Yes, so um the um discussion items uh to, uh, let me see, have I? Yeah, alright, so we had some discussion items uh to uh coordinator clarification of staff level reviews, um clarification of lot merger and lot splits, replat, re-subdivision of land and then define uh major subdivisions. After looking through this and I realized that uh I haven't provided the uh, the commissioners uh really any true direction as to what some of those edits uh that we're recommending it be, this is more of just a clarification. Um, I'm willing to, to pass on the discussion items, just uh with the understanding that um, as the ordinance is defined now, uh, the, the replats that you saw today uh are considered minor replats, um, and in some jurisdictions, those are done in-house and not by the planning commission and uh, some of the concerns that were brought to me that brought that point up um for uh staff level review of those is because when those go to the planning commission, then if they're just residential mergers, uh, the uh, the added cost of doing a plat and then going through planning commission uh with uh not knowing exactly uh uh the, the outcome from the planning commissioners uh can put undue burdens on residential uh situations, but um, but again, uh, I'm fully uh open to just letting these ride and we can discuss some more under subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer, we will revisit these at the, the appropriate time, moving on to liaison reports, uh, May fourth, Commissioner Smith?
Uh, yeah, it was the first reading of ordinance one thousand one amending the lawma- uh Maumell land use plan. And the first reading of ordinance one thousand two, also amending the Maumell zoning map for the changing parts of southwest corridor, section thirty-two township three, north range thirteen west. And it was previously designated as open space, changing it to special use residential. For both of those ordinances.
Anything further, Commissioner Smith?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you, uh, moving on to May eighteenth, Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, second reading of both the uh ordinances that Scott just talked about was held, uh, quite a bit of discussion took place. Uh, final reading is the next meeting coming up, so hard to tell what's gonna happen with that one, but I got a feeling it's gonna be resolved in the courts. Uh, the only other item uh that came up, there was two new civil service commissioners appointed, uh, and that was it.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Fisher, uh liaisons for the month of June, I have June first and June fifteenth is Commissioner Ramsey. Uh, Commissioners, do we have anything further?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and some seconds, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
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 We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.